Meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors work session to order. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Porter, if you'd call the roll.
Mr. Glennon.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhaus.
Here.
Mr. Saddle.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Chris Larson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We are going to begin today with discussion of Senate Bill 942. We have Senator Tommy Norman with us. Good afternoon, Senator. If you want to come on over and join us, that'd be great.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
And as you can, I'm sure you are aware of, we have been hearing from some constituents about the bill, so we appreciate you coming over to give us some information. I'm sure my colleagues have some questions regarding the bill, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you. And Madam Chair, my thank you for giving me the opportunity to take four-ish minutes to share some overviews with you. Actually, very uncharacteristic of me, I actually organized my thoughts out of respect for your time and patience. Let me start by saying that I take absolute complete ownership of Senate Bill 924. I really did not solicit a lot of co-patrons or support out of the General Assembly. I've owned it, and as predictable, some of my more conservative Republican friends have gotten excited and gotten the media to focus on it, but I'm not unaccustomed to taking political heat. Just like yourselves, even though some of us around the table may disagree as to how we govern, I think that all of us govern what we think is in best interest of the citizens, and you don't do that by licking your finger and putting it up in the wind and see which way the winds are blowing. It's just not the way I work. I think Senate Bill 924 has got the opportunity to be transformational. Let me tell you why I went in that direction. Tourism, as you appreciate, is really the backbone of the economy of the historic triangle. I went and looked at U.S. Travel Associates, and they indicated statewide that tourism now is generating north of $25 billion a year and is employing more than 230,000 Virginians. If we want to get parochial about it, the U.S. Travel Association indicate that in the historic triangle, tourism is generating about $1.2 billion plus a year. And they said that 11,945 individuals were employed. That was perplexing to me because the Williamsburg Area Restaurant Association says they employ more than 3,200 people in their restaurants. The Motel Hotel Association says they employ more than 3,100 people in their hotels. Colonial Williamsburg employs about 8,000, and that doesn't include the employees at Busch Gardens. This is kind of spooky.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
It's a refrigerator.
Just with those numbers of 3,200, 3,100, 8,000, doesn't include Busch Gardens, doesn't include Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation, and does not include the National Park Service. So from an economic standpoint, that's where I came from. In 1999, before some of you were involved in local government, I carried the legislation that created the Virginia Tourism Corporation, and I had great expectations of the Virginia Tourism Corporation. I have tried in multiple years to create a reoccurring sustainable source of revenues for the Virginia Tourism Corporation to promote tourism across the Commonwealth of Virginia. There's only been one consistency: I have failed on every effort to get that dedicated source of revenue, and that's been very disappointing. I got to thinking, as I was driving down 64 one morning, and I saw that construction going on on that third lane. Those that are opposed to tax increases, I remember howling back in 2013 when we added the sales tax for the Hampton Roads Transportation Authority. Now, as I drive down the interstate, you know what? I don't hear one person whining about the congestion relief that has come about as a result of that sales tax. And it led me to a conclusion, which I've known for years, that I think that the citizens of James City County and the historic triangle are very tolerant, if not acceptable, if they can see and feel some benefit that is coming to them. And I think that this historic triangle tax has got the opportunity to do that. I'll also say that the I-64 expansions came about after all of Hampton Roads had whined and begged and pleaded for years for money from the state, and we didn't get it. And ultimately, we relied on self-help, and that was kind of the genesis in my mind for Senate Bill 924. Also, because I sit on the Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation, I sit on the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation Board, and I have had conversations and read reports from a number of consultants. And one thing that has become very clear as we've been in a flat or stagnated tourism economy, and that is they have consistently said, "We need to market the historic triangle as a year-round destination and not just fragmented advertising and promotion of a particular attraction that we may have," that we needed money in the marketplace to market us as a destination as a whole. Some of you were around in 2007, and you may recall that I played a fairly instrumental role in that commemoration. We were able to come together collaboratively at that time to put money in the marketplace for promoting the 2007 commemoration. The real disappointment to me of 2007 was when 2008 came. We had no money to continue to market the historic triangle in a legacy manner, which I had envisioned, as had all of the organizations, to try to leverage that the Queen had come and spent time here, the President had come on multiple occasions. We didn't have the money to get that legacy marketing. Now I look at 2019, and I can tell you without being disingenuous, the money that is available for marketing the 2019 commemoration is very thin. It is much more difficult in this marketplace to raise corporate dollars of significant amounts for commemorations, even though there's some folks that are trying very, very hard. And there is an opportunity, I think, for us to get a blip there. Another thing that concerned me was, while the city of Williamsburg took the initiative on this, that it did, I think, present a discussion, it was a catalyst for a discussion. And because they took the initiative, a concern that I had was that this was going to further fragment Williamsburg, James City County, and Yorktown in working together collaboratively in promoting tourism or promoting us as a market destination. And as you all recall, the city went through in their Tourism Development Fund or the TDF a number of different analyses, and ultimately, what they decided upon was increase the meals tax 1% to 6%, and they projected that was going to generate about $1.4 million a year. Increase the room tax 2%, and for the first time in the history of the historic triangle, create an amusement tax of 3%. And I'm not sure, and it's probably an inadequacy of my marketing, but I don't think that you can look at the city in a vacuum, because if you think about it, some of the best restaurants, not exclusively the best restaurants, you go on the Duke of Gloucester Street, Fat Canary, Trellis, Blue Talent, Dog Street, then you go further into High Street with La Jaca. A lot of the very fine restaurants where there are consistent booked reservations are in the city on that. And so I can tell you that everybody in James City County and York County is not going to eat exclusively in those jurisdictions, so you're going to be paying it anyway. We further say that on the admissions tax, I don't know how much thought you've given to that, but a number of the venues where the admission tax would be charged are places that our citizens are going to go, and that's at 3%. So I was concerned about the fragmentation and the disparity between James City County, York County, and Williamsburg, and I have an interest in a hotel in York County. And the only other time that I have ever appeared in front of an elected body advocating the issue was when I appeared before Williamsburg City Council and said, "This is not the best route to go with these three taxes." And I said, "I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. On the hotel that I have an interest in on Bypass Road, I'm going to say, 'Come stay with me and avoid the higher taxes in Williamsburg.' It's all marketing." Knowing a little bit about the hotel business, you get the group business, let me tell you, if you come in for three nights with multiple people and it's two or three bucks a head difference, they'll move. They will move because it's all about the bottom line, and so that concerned me. As you all know, and this hadn't been quite as secretive as perhaps some have said, there have been multiple meetings, just not public hearings, but the support, letters of support from the Historic Triangle Collaborative, Busch Gardens, of course Colonial Williamsburg, Williamsburg Hotel Motel Association, Williamsburg Restaurant Association, Williamsburg Greater Chamber and Tourism Alliance, York County Board of Supervisors, County Administrator, City of Williamsburg, City Manager, Mayor, and James City County Interim County Administrator. So I've tried to create a dialogue amongst people about this, and I am immensely appreciative of the support that has been outpouring on this. I would say to those of you on James City County that I went back and looked on your legislative agendas from 2014 forward. Every year, you've asked for tax equalization so that you at least would have the opportunity to tax consistent with cities. Every year, you've asked for more money to be put in for the promotion of tourism. And I came to the conclusion that we had asked, I was stopped in whining and going to take the lead and trying to do something to provide additional tax resources to James City County and the promotion of tourism. I say that because I looked at some other things. There are a number of options that are available to you all, just as there are options available to York County and the city of Williamsburg. Only half of this money that is being generated from this 1% increase in sales tax is going into the dedicated marketing aspect. The other half is going to be distributed to the localities in the proportionality of collection, of which I just happen to have some numbers on it. It looks like to James City County that, excuse me, based upon the most recent numbers that I have, 2019 would be about 5.8 million on it. And so then that got me thinking about some other issues. I don't read a lot of newspapers, but I have people who try to force me to read them. Recent article, "Many of Its Residents Can't Afford to Live in Williamsburg." That was not just the city of Williamsburg. A James City County Housing Needs Assessment published in 2015 found that a substantial number of people did not have affordable housing available to them in James City County. Another article I looked at, "James City County Eyes Waterfront Investment at Marina." And why do I raise those issues? I don't raise them in an adversarial, antagonistic manner, but if you think about options that are available to James City County on what you could do meaningful that would benefit the citizens that they could see and feel, I thought about. I'd like to think that I'm a fiscal conservative, but by the same token, I think I'm fiscally responsible. The option would be to roll back the 2 cents real estate tax, to lower the beep pole tax, to lower the machinery and tools tax, and I don't say that antagonistically. If you wanted to afford some relief to the citizens, there is an option that's available to you. If you wanted to put money, I know what you all have talked about, what the projected cost is in the marina, if you wanted to put money in that to do a redevelopment there which would bring in more tourism dollars, would bring people over from Jamestown Settlement and the historic Jamestown, there would be a source. Some of you may remember, if you go to Yorktown back in the days when it was Nixon, the Yorktown Pub, and you look at it today, that entire redevelopment was done through an increased tax that I carried for York County that was dedicated to doing that. And so if you go down there in the summer, it's pretty viable, I would say. So there's the option, you could do something there. A lot of talk about sports tourism, which is huge. I follow it because they do nice bookings. The girls' world softball championship was supposed to be here in strength this summer. About half of it came. We've had the Cal Ripken World Series here. Something more could be done at War Hill. You could talk to the city of Williamsburg about seeing if there was any interest in doing a joint project on their Aqua Center. So there are a lot of things out there. If you wanted to give the teachers raises, I'm just saying there's flexibility out there, and please, I am not being presumptuous to suggest to you at all how you spend your money, and I'm really not. I'm just saying, there are options there from capital improvements to, you know, salaries, compensation, to housing. So I do hope that you will be considerate of it. The accountability has been enhanced dramatically. We've increased the representation to include the Restaurant Association and the Hotel Motel Association. There's an annual audit that's got to be submitted, not just to the local governments, but to the Chairman of the House of Delegates Appropriation Committee and the Chairman of the Senate Finance Committee, so that we know that that money is being spent appropriately. So I realize that that's a solvency there, and that's kind of where I am.
Thank you. I'm sure there's questions from my colleagues, so I'll open it up to that. I do appreciate the, I take what you say about the legislation, about our legislative agenda and asking for tourism. Of course, it wasn't quite the equalization of taxing that we were hoping for. We were hoping to have a little bit more on the lines with the cities get. Counties don't really get that with the current setup, so we're going to keep putting that on our legislative agenda.
Madam Chair, if I could say, and I don't have a problem with that, I really don't. And maybe as the legislative landscape changes some, but I don't see it right now. And maybe November of 19 will change the composition of the House of Delegates. I don't know, but I'm just telling you, they are not going there. It has never been an issue with me.
Thank you.
Senator, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I know there has been a lot of discussion about process, and I don't want to get too deeply into that question about whether or not people knew what was going on and had involvement. I think part of our situation frankly was an internal issue that, at least I felt that I had several questions that I wanted to get answered and didn't get that full kind of response that would have made me understand a little bit better what was going on. So I don't want to say that your handling of it was something that cut out local government generally, but I do think that we had a different kind of situation than perhaps the other two regional communities did. But more on policy matters, I had a couple of things that I was curious about. You know, I think Ms. Larson just indicated one of the concerns that I would have about policy, and that is that we certainly have asked for tax equalization, and as you've just indicated, that's a tough sell, although, you know, the House of Delegates has changed its mind on some issues this year. And maybe they are going to change their minds again, as they sit and reflect on last November, think about next November in 19. But the question that I would basically have is why a better approach might not be to extend the authority of local governments, both cities and counties, to make choices about generating revenue. We've asked several times for authority to impose a cigarette tax, for instance. City of Virginia Beach collects $11 million on their cigarette tax down there. City of Williamsburg collects a significant amount of money on their cigarette tax, something we can't do. And with respect, you know, in this particular case, really what we're being told is, well, this is a tax that you are now going to be given as opposed to given the authority to utilize. And so I think that's a source of concern about this legislation from the policy perspective. More substantively on policy, I was curious as to why the decision was made to remove the $2 tax and why we're not expecting the tourist industry directly to provide more of the financial lift. Our taxes are already relatively low for tourist communities in the Commonwealth, and it certainly appears that there would be room for additional revenue to be generated by room sales and the like, rather than reducing the amount of revenue that comes from that source.
All right, I'll try to answer a couple of them, and I'm very respectful. I don't take, I'm rigid with what you said at all. On the awareness factor, I really would like to share with you, because I don't know how many meetings there were, but there were a number of them where your former county administrator, your former chairman were there, your current chairman was there, your interim county administrator was there. I mean, I remember we had one in Richmond, and people were seated all the way around the room on it, so it wasn't that I was trying to obfuscate or hide something on it. I was actually trying to evolve it, you know, through the various localities. And the interesting thing, Mr. Supervisor, not one person ever told me, "Stop." Never did anybody say, "Stop, don't do this." And I wasn't trying to put Mr. Porter on the dime, I mean, who's been a good friend, no, a friend of mine for many, many years. I wouldn't do it to him, but, you know, I get a letter of support from the county, and then I started getting the pushback. And frankly, I think some of the public pushback, no disrespect, but is coming from a small group of Republicans who think you ought not raise taxes anytime for anything, for any reason. I believe that. And I don't say that to be unkind to my colleagues, but that's where it is. So on the awareness.
And again, I want to stick to that, I think that a big part of this had to do with internals of the board that did not allow for a kind of full exposure to that discussion.
All right, I accept that distinction. I don't think that's something I could control.
No, absolutely not.
On the policy, the city, again, equalization in the county, Mr. Supervisor, I don't see it coming. This legislation came out of the Senate and out of the House of Delegates with more Democratic support than it did Republican support. And I say that, I take that with some degree of pride, because, yeah, I'm supposed to be the Republican leader, but I try to be fair with people, and I think it translates into some effectiveness on it, but I'm not even sure in the Senate that I could get legislation through, and I'm being very serious, legislation giving counties and cities the equal taxation things and use cigarette taxes. Let me tell you, you know, everybody hears about Dominion Energy being the 800-pound gorilla. Do not underestimate Altria. Do not underestimate them. I mean, they have a very significant presence as a major corporate citizen in Virginia. And I mean, I'll try in 2019 to get the equalization, and maybe you would say that some of the more conservative Republicans that would block this as a matter of policy are going to be foxhole Christians. I'm not so sure. I'm really not so sure, but I don't mind trying to do it.
So I understand that's a really heavy lift and maybe beyond the opportunity, but so what about the other aspect of that, though? The decision to remove the $2 tax, which was already supporting tourism marketing and which basically seems to be saying, "We're not expecting the most direct beneficiaries of expanded overnight visitation to carry the same load, even the same load as they already have been carrying."
I do have a little bias on this, and I won't disclose it. No, I mean, I do. I think that the tourism industry in general and the historic triangle is absorbing a lot, and I think they afford a lot. I think that they are employing more than 12,000. I think it's closer to 15,000 to 16,000, and they're providing the jobs. And let me tell you, it has been no fun. The very first meeting I went to on the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation Board of Trustees, we let almost 1,000 people go, and I remember telling my friend Colin Campbell, "Great, you all are going home. I'm staying here in this community, the other trustees." But as you all know, I grew up here, and I've worked various jobs, and I know these people. You know, the Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation, we've got jobs down there we cannot fill because of fiscal constraints right now. So I think that they are doing a lot. The 2% tax, if I recall correctly, you know, there's the opportunity to bring it back at a later date on it, but if, you know, if you all want to try to bring it back.
In 2026.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, if it becomes, I didn't try to block it permanently, but to give us an opportunity to see whether or not putting this money into the marketplace was going to have the effect that I hoped, and that James City County, York County, and the city of Williamsburg, we're getting additional revenues that are being generated. And so it's not a completely satisfactory answer, but I think they're absorbing a lot.
Well, yeah, I guess, you know, again, even with that $2 head tax or $2 tax for room night, our hotel taxes are still lower than the number of other tourist destinations, certainly than Arlington.
I agree.
Or Virginia Beach, certainly, and even in the Commonwealth. I mean, Virginia Beach has an 8% plus $2 tax, so they're up a bit more. And of course, you know, I've gotten a number of emails with folks posting their recent stays in other tourist communities, showing the level of taxation there. I guess one of the concerns that I would have, you know, as we've talked about, as we talk about policy issues, I understand that initially the legislation excluded groceries from the increased sales tax.
Yes, sir.
And now it does not. And when I think about the possibility of affording tax relief as part of this process, you know, it's possible to see how the property owner can get some tax relief, but it's much harder to imagine how we could give that tax relief to the person who rents and spends a disproportionate share of their annual income in the grocery store. And so I wonder why it wouldn't have been possible to keep that out. And so I wonder why it wouldn't have been possible to keep that out, even if it was through leaving that $2 tax in.
That's a very fair question. And your representatives were sitting at the table when York County brought that up, and York County wanted that as part of the package. And I will say again, and once again, I'm not casting disparaging remarks, nobody at that table said, "Don't do this." Neil Morgan stated, you know, "York County would like for it to continue to be, excuse me, would like for it to be on food." And everybody was around the table, and nobody said, "Don't do that." And once again, I'm not trying to be critical, but if somebody had said, "Whoa, you know, this is a game changer, this is a deal breaker," obviously, I would have embraced it. I'm not saying it wouldn't be in there, sir. What I'm saying is, you know, I would have addressed it, but nobody has brought that up.
Well, again, I think if, from a public policy perspective, it's a real concern.
Well, I would, and I don't mean this unkind, you know, I would expect the empathy that you have for the citizens, I respect that you say that, and I would expect to hear that.
And I guess, again, you know, internally, there was a problem that we didn't have the opportunity to have that discussion to, so that somebody would have raised that issue.
I would say this, and once again, not being adversarial, if James City County, if anybody had picked up the phone and said, "Tommy, come meet with us in a work session during the session," I would have come home and sat down. I mean, I, you know, I think you all know me well enough, even though you may disagree with me on some policy issues or political issues, if you had said, "Hey, this is really important, please come and meet with us and tell me what's going on." I hate this word, but I would have come here and been absolutely transparent with you on what was going on, but nobody ever asked me to do that from any of the three localities. And so I'm not defensive about it. I mean, I, maybe I should have picked up the phone and called you, I'll say, "Hey, do you want me to come?" But, you know, I didn't, and things are pretty hectic, but I would have made the time if you hadn't asked to do that. And so I was dealing with the information that I had in front of me in those group meetings, where people were either saying, "Tommy, we want this, or we don't want this." And nobody ever said, "Hey, don't take the transient occupancy tax $2 away." Nobody ever said, you know, "Hey, we don't want it on food, we want it on food, work it out." And so, and please don't take this wrong, I'm always a lot wiser, and things are a lot clearer to me in the rearview mirror than they are in the front windshield sometimes. And I would have tried to react, but I can't react, sir, to that which is not brought to my attention. And I'm sorry, maybe you had-
Right. But it was internal, it was originally not in the bill, and so presumably, there was some sensitivity to that issue early on. And I understand that, you know, there may have been somebody who just suggested that, "Well, that's going to cost us money, so let's put it back in, let's put the tax on groceries as well."
Yes, sir.
But, you know, again, presumably, there was a reason that it was excluded initially.
A very poor explanation is because it wasn't, the discussion didn't take place with the attorneys during the draftsmanship, and it didn't come up as an issue until we had one of these round-the-table meetings.
Did we, did you have a sense of the, any way of apportioning the relative share of the cost of the tax increase on full-time residents versus tourists? Is there any way of bringing that out? I mean, I tried to do a couple of quick calculations of it. It seems to me that, you know, I've heard the number, $10 a month per person is likely to be the impact, or is it $10 a household? I was figuring that if we simply took the 1% that we get back from the state and divided by the population of James City County, we wind up with a number of about $138 a year.
I was thinking, it was the back-of-the-envelope numbers that were given to me. I am not a numbers guy. I never pretend to be a numbers guy, but the back of the envelope that was given to me was about $10 a month a household.
Right, and a household, yes.
Yes, sir.
So I guess that's a little bit of a disconnect as far as I can see, because, again, I'm just using the $11 million or so that we're collecting, that 1% and dividing it by the 75,000 residents of the county, and I think that came up with $138. And I looked at it for another community that doesn't have the same intensity of tourism.
What I can tell you is, and I've seen this number on a number of different takeoffs, but this is from the U.S. Travel Association, Senate Finance, House Appropriations, they think that the net revenue to James City County is going to be $5,798,700, okay?
Right.
Okay, you would divide that number by your 75,000, if that's your ballpark population, I don't know what that comes out to, but that's-
That's the half, that's the tourism part of it, right? That's-
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Yes, sir, it is.
So.
And there it is. I mean, that's one way to approach it, but as I said, finance had told me roughly $10 a household per month.
Right.
And that's-
Yep. And so I was trying to figure it out in terms of a community that doesn't have as large a tourism component to its economy, like a place like Charlottesville, Almorel, not Charlottesville itself, but Almorel County or a place like that. And I was basically coming up with somewhere between $100 and $138 in comparison to the $135 that we would generate. And so I was kind of wondering, you know, what expectations we have about what share of it is going to be carried by the local citizen versus the visitor.
I did attempt to apportion it, to be very candid with you. I just took the gross number, roughly the number of citizens and households, and figured it out. I didn't know how to apportion it.
Right, right. Well, I'm sure my formula here is not-
You and I both have liberal arts background, which is kind of scary when it comes to numbers.
Right.
But again, and I say this advocating is that I think there's the opportunity for a tangible benefit to the citizens.
Yeah, and I don't want to disagree with the fact that, A, tourism could certainly use a shot in the arm here. I would like to have better evidence that tourism marketing has paid dividends for us to the extent that we've done it so far, and I don't think we've gotten very, very strong evidence of that so far in our conversations with Wadmac and-
I am trying to restructure, if you will.
Right.
And that's why I put the accountability in there. I've had some conversations with the Tourism Alliance, that the revenues that are being generated, not that we don't have good people over there, but you could really get a world-class marketer in here, if that's what it took. I know what consultants have told Colonial Williamsburg, and I believe them on it, and we really need to do something. I don't, I'm trying to be a little cautious here, but I'm not sure how many of the citizens of James City County and Williamsburg and York County appreciate how fragile the tourism market is right now. Colonial Williamsburg cannot continue to draw down $58 million a year on their endowment to subsidize operational costs. And so the only option is to try to increase the attendance that we're getting in the entire locality, in Colonial Williamsburg, in Jamestown, in Yorktown. We're trying to change the market a little bit. I mean, we spent, what, $30-some million, $40 million down in Yorktown, in state dollars with American Revolutionary Museum in Yorktown. And as I look at the attendance numbers for Colonial Williamsburg, Jamestown, and Yorktown, which I'm one of the few people that's privy to all of those numbers, the tick-up in Jamestown, Yorktown exclusively was due to the opening of that museum, which is a novelty, and it will level off, especially as Philadelphia starts to bring the Revolutionary Museum online. So I just see it as a regional issue. And yes, I think everybody's maybe got to give a little bit, and I am prayerful. I can't give you empirical data that says, "Mr. Supervisor, absolutely, positively, it's going to work," but to do nothing, to me, was unacceptable. And when I've got 12,000 to 15,000 people in these three localities that are working in that industry, that's a real deal to me. And when I have been there, and 1,000 laid off, 342 outsourced just last year, that's real to me. And so is it perfect? No. Could it have been handled better? I listened to you ask very thoughtful questions. Yes, it could, but I thought I was handling it as well as I could based upon the information that I had. And honestly, I didn't think about what might be going on internally with the James City County Board of Supervisors, the York County Board of Supervisors, or City Council, because I was trying to include their representatives in a discussion.
And you had no way of knowing that anyhow.
And I hope you didn't find me defensive.
No, no, I appreciate your responses. Let me just, and I'll just ask one more, and then I know others have questions. And that is just to give you an opportunity to kind of clear up the air perhaps a little bit. I was a little bit surprised at our recent retreat with the school board and city council to be told that, by a member of the school board, that you'd indicated to them that the intention was that the local money be used for the schools.
I said it was an option that was available. I have never told you all how to spend your money. I haven't. And don't think I have been tempted. I'm a taxpayer too, don't forget that. And I own multiple pieces of property in the county, but I say that is an option that is available. I remember, because I was on that joint Board of Supervisors-
School liaison.
The school liaison committee. I know how it is, you know, K-12 has an insatiable appetite, doesn't matter what you give them. And I said, "That is an option, but that is not my deal."
Well, I appreciate your clarifying that for the record, because we, you know, we do hear people-
I understand.
Who've already figured out ways to spend local money multiple times.
You have been around me long enough personally and politically and professionally. There are a number of things that are attributed to what I say, which I have not said. It's just the way it is.
I'll throw something out. Of course, no one wants a tax, all of us, none of us here won't pay a tax. We'd be happy if we never had to pay a tax. So that being what it is, we got to come into reality too. If it wasn't for what we've done for transportation, and I see it firsthand being Chairman of HR Tax, if it hadn't have been for that, we'd be still riding on that rotten Interstate 64 and spend an hour just to get to New Purnus from here. So it's amazing how that has changed, and I understand your concept and where you're going as far as, okay, let's take this concept and let's change the thought process and the way we do business as far as how we do, we're able to do transportation. We can in turn do it the same way in bringing more people. If we lose Bush Gardens, if we lose Colonial Williamsburg, and people say, "You shouldn't support them, and I shouldn't have a tax for this and all that," I understand what they're saying, but if we lose one of those big businesses, the real estate tax to cover that nut is going to cost us all, or and the citizens than we know about. So we can help them with a little to make the whole thing better and get more volume through town, through everything we're doing, you know, down there at the campsite, down there at the beach, everything that we're doing, all our little projects that we've got going on James City County. If we can put more people into those projects, that means we can keep, in the long run, the taxes down and keep it from escalating and becoming your homes and all that, and personal property being taxed and raised. So, you know-
That's probably the reason, I mean, and again, I wasn't picking on it, but just was thinking about the Jamestown Marina. That, I have been to some other localities that have done similar type of waterfront situations, and they can be a revenue generator.
Doesn't.
And you've got a situation where visitors are right across the street, and no disrespect to my friends in Second Street, but there could be other opportunities for food service and other related businesses on there, which generates more money.
Yep.
I just was trying to think of a variety of things, but, I mean, I was there in 2013, and I probably didn't have quite as many last words for those spineless people that call in, "I don't want to do something to your face," but, I mean, they were raising cane about that, you know? And I just drove it today.
Yep. Well, I know we've sat in these meetings more than one time, and legislation has come down and said, "You will do this," and there's no funding. I've said it myself, "If that gone, will they ever send us any funding out?" So now we're, I see it, we're trying to get some help with some funding, but, and I told the board last time, I said, "You know, I would think that if we had an issue, you know, with this or with any of them, we should address all of them as we move along," because I, you know, there's a lot of bills that go through there. A lot of them affect James City County. A lot of them have been through the schools that have cost us more money that we've had to come up with. And I know we, as the citizens and all that, because I pay tax there too. I've got a few pieces of property, and I, they just went up. So I know how it is. I'm not immune to any of that. And, but, you know, we can't move forward by going behind. We've got to be able to move forward. We've got to be able to do the things that we need to do. We've got to be, transportation is a prime example. We've got a $465 million budget in HR Tax this year that we're operating in. We've got $1.3 billion that we've got on cash available. We've got $5.5 billion that we're going to spend, and doing 3.8 billion of that is for the Hanford Bridge Tunnel. And that is going to be finished by 2024. That's huge. That's given us the ability to do all these sites. Now, there's 10,000 more projects we need to do across our district, but we've been at least been able to do that. We spent 3.7 million to get over $100 million in transportation for James City County alone that we put in. That's huge. I'll take that investment any day. So that's just what that has done in transportation, and I can see the possibility in the tourism industry and where that can help. Do we want to have another tax? No, I don't either. But reality is, it costs to do the things that we want as a community, and it costs to make our community better. We can't do it, you know, we can't continue to not put into our community and not make our community better and bring the visitors here like we've always done.
One thing that came to my mind, and I'm sorry I wasn't quick enough to retrieve it, when Supervisor McClinton, they asked me about Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach puts north, just out of the revenues they collect, north of $13 million in the marketing place, $13 million.
Right.
And a lot of that comes from exactly what you were talking about, that incremental increase.
But they have an emissions tax, they've got a hotel tax that's getting higher than ours.
They put a lot more in.
They generate $100 million off tourist tax if you include the meals tax and that. So it's a pretty significant amount of money that they're raising to generate that money, but it's not coming from a sales tax. I think that's the question that a lot of people have raised, whether that's the appropriate vehicle for generating that revenue.
I can also say to you, I own some waterfront property in Virginia Beach.
You own a lot of property. Just an observation.
I've worked really hard.
I know, I know you have.
But look at their tax rate and your tax rate.
Yeah.
And my water bill, if I don't use a drop, is north of $100 a month.
But that's why we try to make sure that our citizens are being taxed fairly, and we're being as efficient as possible.
I'll trade you, sir, my water bill at Smith Mountain Lake is $100 bucks a month.
Wow.
You've got water right there.
Yeah, you can get it out of there.
A lot of these brackets, you can put it on the lawn.
Are there other questions?
Yeah, not so much a question, I guess, as an observation. And I just made a couple of notes as we were going through, and, you know, most of what I was looking concerned about has been touched on. But I guess one of the concerns that I had, I came on the board, I was totally unaware of this. I came on the board, I was totally unaware of this until February. So I'm one of the ones who was caught sort of flat footed. What I would say is that my concern is we have had three point, a little over, I guess about 3 million bucks by the combined jurisdictions in the Wadmac a year for the, quite a few years. And I guess the results have been disappointing, to say the least, because the numbers keep going down. And so it brings me to a basic question. And it's, it's not a question I expect you to answer. It's a question that I think that the community is asking. But it's something that, something we have to consider. Is this just a marketing problem? In other words, if we, if we put a significant amount of money into the problem, into marketing, is that going to solve our problem? Or is there a more systemic problem with the product? And to your point, there's a whole lot more money being put into it, but what's the product? The product is visible. It's roads, it's lack of congestion that people can see. What, what my, what my concern is, is the lack of ability to get your hands on, how do you measure what success looks like? And, you know, when you take a look at, at your, the audit, you know, you talk about, okay, we've built accountability into it, and there's an audit that goes back. What I haven't seen is what are the metrics by which we evaluate whether what we're doing is successful or not? And, you know, I, I got to tell you that I've lived here for a long time. My daughter and my wife both work for Colonial Williamsburg.
Yes, sure.
They made a whopping 10 bucks an hour. My, my wife gets $38.88 a month in retirement, whether she wants it or not. But, you know, a lot of these people who are working in our tourism industry are working in very low wage jobs.
Yes, sure.
This doesn't seem to be addressing that particular thing, which we're trying to wrestle with, is how do we, how do we diversify our economy so we can have some of these higher paid jobs as well? So, you know, I, I know that tourism is an important part of it. But the accountability and the, the concern that, that we have from our citizens, I think, is focused a lot on that. And I will tell you, it's not just your Republicans. It's the Democrats. And it's everybody, it's across the board. And I, when I wrote my letter the other day, I said in it very clearly that nobody had contacted me in favor of it. And I must retract that, because since then I've had one person. One person. I'll tell you who later, you know it. Who has called me and said, yes, we are, we are in favor of it. And I think a lot of it has not to do with the fact that they don't recognize the importance of the, the industry to the community. I think what they're concerned about was they, they didn't feel that they got to weigh in to the degree that our citizens got to weigh in when we raised the tax rate locally here. And I think that's a frustration. And it's a frustration you're dealing with. So, I, you know, I, I'm not asking for an answer. I just, I just wanted to lay that out as an observation for people to, to think about. And personally.
But do they, that, that's a good point. And do they, on all the bills that go up there, that all the bills that you put in, do you have a big form for all the citizens? We, we were able to do that because we talked about it. We said, we're, we're getting ready to do this. We want to roll it out. I even suggested we go from jurisdiction to jurisdiction to jurisdiction, and we have plenty of meetings so everybody can know that. Now, in your world, which is great above ours.
Not necessarily.
It's, 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 it's a, you know, a, is that something that is really you could do with all the bills that go through? That's the thing, and anyone that has to do with a tax issue.
I think the issue was, had it been a statewide tax, I don't think it would have been the issue.
Right.
The fact that it was a tax on three jurisdictions that was being passed on at a statewide level is what has really gotten the backs of some people in the local community.
I think that's due to this board, to be personally honest with you. I think it was.
Well, let's hold off on that until the, until we're having our discussion, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
A couple of comments if I may. First, on the latter thing. You know, I sat on a Board of Supervisors, and what was the first thing out of my mouth on this subject? I said, I own it. I was willing to take the heat on the tax increase. I was willing to take it. And I wasn't trying to shed it off on anyone else on it. But, you know, you ask a, a very reasonable question about the problem. I think some of it is marketing. Traditionally, the Historic Triangle, if, if, there's a symbiotic relationship in my analysis. People come to Colonial Williamsburg and Busch Gardens, and then they're, if you're interested in history, those people are more inclined to go to Jamestown, more inclined to go to Yorktown. And it's sort of a symbiotic relationship. I think some of it is a marketing issue because habitually we have primarily concentrated on the Northeast, moving like north of Virginia through DC, Maryland, Delaware up in that way. We really haven't gone south to try to penetrate what is a very ripe market, and that is in, in North Carolina and South Carolina. Decisions have been made about marketing based upon dollars. And so I think there are other areas that we could market better. I think that 2019 could be a metric if we have money in the marketplace and that we can get a legacy out of that. On the product, very fair question. Millennials, I don't understand them. But they see things very differently than probably you and I do. And on Jamestown, Yorktown, we moved to more hands-on approaches on things, tried to change the product. Colonial Williamsburg, my late father-in-law would have a heart attack if he saw the transformation in the, in the programming at Colonial Williamsburg, putting an ice rink on the state, I mean, on the Duke Gloucester Street, you know, throwing hatchets, shooting, you know, muskets. Just a lot of, we are trying to, on the foundation, to create a different market out there. You know, you've got one of the great golf courses on the East Coast, but no money, you know, that's really to market. And that's one of the things that the consultants say, you need to market that, not as come to Williamsburg and go walk down the Duke Gloucester Street and stumble over on the golf course, but, but to market that. And you all may not remember, at one point, James City County got $150,000 per year to market its golf courses. And that money, you know, went away. And the vagaries of legislative funding sometimes depend on who's got the muscle. And that's a terrible thing to say, but it is the truth. And so as I look at the Virginia Tourism Corporation funding, and I see a carve-out for Southwest Virginia, I see a carve-out to Portsmouth, Virginia, who wanted to save the, what was that thing? The Virginia Hall of, Sportsman Hall of Fame. And even after we gave them the money, they had to close shop and go to Virginia Beach. A lot of times, you know, it is muscle, but we are trying to change the product. And on metrics, the revenues generated are going to be somewhat of a reflection on it, because we can take, I don't have the exact numbers, but we can see the incremental increase and where it's coming from. I get a report every month on heads and beds. It's not made public, but I see every month how many covers are served at the restaurants on Colonial Williamsburg, how many rooms are occupied, how many nights are occupied, how many people are playing golf. I mean, there are some intrinsic metrics that, that can be there. And I think some of them need to be made transparent. So I do think there are some metrics there, and I can tell you. And the people over at the Alliance know it. I have very high expectations on their accountability on this. Because what is given can be taken away. And I promise you, if I was able to have enough friends to help me get through this, when those same friends were voting against an increase on a transient occupancy tax in Rockbridge County alone, I expect that I could find the friends to say, this ain't working, it's going away. But I do think we need to give it, you know, a multi-year run to see if it, if it works. And, and I say to you all, if it doesn't work, I'll get rid of it. I don't have to be any more direct than that.
Couple of things if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
A, a lot of the communication that I'm hearing from my constituents is concerned over the fact that we just raised taxes here in James City County.
Yes, ma'am.
And they've been, you know, they, a lot of folks remember that, you know, with the raise in that tax, it was going to take care of a lot of things that were needed here in the county. And if we started seeing the surplus there, that we'd be start rolling some taxes back. That said, I, I under, I, I see where you're coming from with the first half cent to tourism marketing. I understand your point. I would like to know, how did the second half cent come into play with the extra revenue for the localities? Because I, there's been a lot of confusion, because even as of last week, we were all trying to figure out are groceries in, are groceries out? I've got city councilmen telling me that groceries are out. And I'm like, no, groceries are in, and we're all, I mean, there's so, to that point, there's been a lot of, lot of confusion. So I'm just curious how that extra half cent came in.
Well, I was looking for a source of revenues to do marketing. There wasn't any question about that. But I also thought that there had to be some benefit to the localities. So that's where we came up. Originally, it started out, and I don't know it was ever formalized in a draft of a bill, but originally we were talking a percentage and a half. And then, when I looked at some of the numbers, I backed it down to 1%. And as I said, the net positive revenue to James City County is 5.8 million, based on the numbers that I have from a couple of different sources. And if, there had been discussions at one point about suggesting in the legislation how the localities would spend it. And I said, absolutely not. And it was even in a draft at one point, but it did, I didn't let it go public. And I said, you know, we need to leave it up to the city council and the Board of Supervisors to determine what their priorities are on how to spend that money. And so Supervisor Saddle, that's why I said, you know, I considered, just for discussion purposes, a number of options that the Board of Supervisors could consider. You know, you know, whether it was part of your capital improvement program that might improve facilities at War Hill, where it doesn't matter what your income is or where you live, that you, you have the opportunity to use that amenity. But a number of capital improvement programs, that's been very important to the city of Williamsburg. If you look at their TDF, I mean, they've got a couple of pages of options that are available. But, you know, I also, you know, indicated you could roll back various taxes. And that was before your letter to the editor, you know, that, that I was already thinking about. If you wanted to afford some tax relief, if you want to try to afford some tax relief on small businesses to encourage some successes out of the incubation or attraction, you know, that you could do that. Or if you were looking at, at comp, that you had the flexibility to do something there. And we are trying to do something about comp with Colonial Williamsburg. I am aware of how low it is on it. But that's one of the reasons, modest as it is, we put in that $50 a month where income, month, excuse me, year, month of a month, that every employee, non-union employee, got 50 bucks, you know, for that month if we did it. And I think, you know, that, that's come out to about 600 bucks or so. Not huge, but money based upon performance. And, and so you talk about product. What we're trying to do is tell our frontline employees, hey, we need to step it up, not just with the products, but the delivery of that product, because these are the people that are doing it, and they could be a tangible benefit to you. So Supervisor Saddle, I, I just say, that one half percent can be spent however you all deem in your collective wisdom is best. But I didn't want it just to create it and go to marketing.
Thank you. Any further comments? And, and I, as I've said publicly as well, I, I was at a meeting at the Historic Triangle Collaborative with you on November 1st, where we discussed, or where you talked about the different amount of money that Virginia Beach, I believe West Virginia, puts into tourism. And there was also discussion about if, if this came to be, what would, how would the fiscal be run? So we did not discuss groceries, let me be clear. Because I, I've heard that as well. There's, there's a lot of angst about that part of the bill. And then I guess, as you say, I can't quote it as well as you do about the windshield versus after all of this, what, is there something that you would have done differently? Would you have rolled it out to the?
I will say this. I, over the years, I've carried a lot of legislation, some of which has been beneficial to James City County. And I'm not patting myself on the back, but I don't ever recall going out and conducting a public hearing. And maybe that's myopic on my part. I, I just have not done it. And in the compression of 45 or 60 days with the pace that I'm moving, I'm not even sure it's realistic on it. If you go back to our founding fathers, not being too esoteric, is, there is, and my professor over here knows better than I do. I mean, there was a pretty heated debate about the role of elected officials, you know, were they sent to Richmond to exercise the collective will of the people they represented? Or were they sent to Richmond to exercise the best judgment they, that that representative had based upon the information that's in front of them? And, and I will say, I'm sensitive to where the general public is, but I think you send me there to use the best judgment that I can. And I will tell you, and, and I've appreciated the questions and the suggestions. I am unequivocally convinced that this, if we give it an opportunity to run, and it is going to be transformational. I, I believe it. We cannot just remain stagnant. And I am really, I'm not a big tax and spend guy. Yes, I voted for HR Tech, because I thought it was the right thing to do. And I went out by myself on this and didn't ask for other commitments, because I was willing to absorb it. And because I believe in it that much. And if it doesn't work, we'll get rid of it. But I do think it'll work.
All right. Okay, well, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it. And I think we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Well, thank you all very much for the courtesies. And I know I talked a lot, and I apologize. No, I don't, I'm very passionate about this. Because I do believe it's transformational. And so my enthusiasm is too effusive. Thank you for enduring me.
Thank you, we appreciate your help.
Did you gather out for a recess?
Yeah.
Take a break.
And once again, we've grown, um, grown pretty quickly from just, uh, you know, 20 years ago. And, um, have some, have some employees that work through that. And these are fixed routes, meaning they run, um, daily on a, on basically a fixed route. So, but we also have, if you may know, a paratransit ADA service, which is legally mandated by the American Disabilities Act. And so that, our ADA will, has to run anywhere within three-quarter mile of a fixed route. So that, that program is growing. It's still maybe relatively small, but, um, as people find out about it. And, you know, a lot of transit systems have switched more to a mobility model, model. So you, you know, these people that maybe can't drive or, um, also may not be able to walk and get places they need to go. That's the whole focus of it. So that's been growing as people get out and do more. So that's a, you know, a very, very small image of our, um, routes. And you see, once again, kind of geographic coverage. You should have a map of this also in your folder. So that's just showing those fixed routes as well. And, um, again, the, the east-west thing is going to be part of our, our thing forever. So, um, we, every six years, we're required to do something called a Transit Development Plan. That doesn't mean we have to wait six years, but, um, and that may be changed as well. Mr. McGlennan, I don't know if you're with TISDAK thing, they're doing some reforms. So it may change to, to five years, more of a strategic plan, but, um, we're waiting on that to, to come down. But, and, and so two, June 2016 is when the last one was, um, completed. So we're kind of still working through and just letting those changes take effect. But at that time, about 30 changes were recommended and Bill was instrumental in doing that. But a lot of it was, and we've implemented all but four. Um, wasn't something where we really changed a ton of routes. We did tweak some and got some better ridership on some, but we, we also just did some things like instituted a different frequency service, um, schedule. And it has, um, it has developed into a, a better on-time performance and reduced the strain on some of our drivers. And that's sort of the unseen thing. And Maria's, Maria Boone, our safety coordinator, has been very focused on that, is you can't, you can't act like your drivers can just do anything and, and they have to be, they have to have these, um, changes made to suit them and to, to make sure that they've got time to do what they do safely and on time. So, um, so those, those, those changes were very good for that. And, um, we do think it's been, been generally positively accepted and made some, um, made some nice changes. So this is actually our, our, just a, a quick view of our Lackey Route, just to show you that fixed route as well. That's been one of our big changes. Um, that was actually, Lackey Route was suggested in the TDP as well, to go through Mounds Bay here. Um, so we might, might tweak the route. We're, we're checking with our, uh, federal transit administration representatives, but, um, I think you have a, you should have a map of that, too. You can actually see in your, in your folder. So, but that does work its way down 60 and come back 143. It's, um, it's a long route. And so that's why it's called demonstration. We're trying it out, but, uh, it's, it, we need to make it more convenient as we move forward. But, um, just, uh, if you all get any feedback on it or have anybody with questions about it, please help and call us.
How is it performing? I mean, do you have riders down to Lackey?
Yeah, yeah. We, we probably doing about, uh, two dozen or more a day. It's, it's just such a, you know, we knew, we knew there, there are trade-offs as in public policy with anything. There's trade-offs. And we had to kind of trade off a longer route to get down there. And so the people that are using are very dedicated riders. Um, so, but the demonstration part of it, we're just kind of trying to see what demand is out there and if there's other, uh, destinations that people have. And so as, you know, either the demonstration period comes to an end or if we can make some interim changes, we want to do that to increase the ridership and, and, uh, you know, serve more people. But there were trade-offs at the beginning to get down there. So we know those. We're going to keep ridership down to a degree, the long, the long route, uh, cheaply. So, but it's been okay. We've been, we've been really helping some people. Um, on the technology side, uh, in 2012, the authority did implement a, what's called an automatic, automated vehicle locator system. I guess it took a couple of years to really get implemented. But that has been, uh, you know, where you can, um, get on and see where the bus is and, and our, our dispatch can, can see where the buses are at the time. And if somebody calls and wonders where it is, they can tell them. That's exactly where it is. So, uh, you know, this, this was something with the timing was just right for us. A, a big system like HRT is still needing to procure one of these things and put it into, into use because they, you know, they just didn't do it at the time. They were doing other things. And so this was something we kind of got right at the right time and were able to implement it and, um, really be ahead of the curve. And, uh, the ABL system is accompanied by a real-time passenger information system called Bus Time. You can, you can text from a, from a site, I mean, from a stop and, um, be able to see where your bus is, how, what the ETA is on it. So it's been a nice feature. Along with that, we're, um, you know, we're always seeking to, and over on the next, next slide, that's a, that's an example of how our signs look. If you text for bus time, you text GO WADA, you have to text GO WADA SPACE, or you'll get a bunch of gibberish. You won't see it. So you learn that from experience. Um, and then also on the, on the right is what, um, you know, what you, you see on the internet perhaps. And there, there also, so there's, for instance, there's your little bus, as you see. So it's all, all very, uh, very user-friendly. So, um, you know, there are some, we even, as you know, with technology, things have even improved from, from six years ago when we started this. So we're looking at the next, the next generation of these things and then working with staff to really, um, try to, try to keep up with the times as well. Um, so with all that said, uh, kind of what we're doing, looking ahead, and we had a retreat with our board back in November, um, just looking ahead, as, as I said, we had the TDP done. So strategic planning, or at least some, some, some planning is baked into what we do from the state. But, you know, we want to look a little bit just what we might be able to do in the, in the near term. And, uh, with opportunities, we say amenities and, and what we're talking about is just making, making sure to improve the shelters, the stops, and make sure our, our riders are well-served there. I mean, we know we have some efficiencies there and our, our new transit planner is, is, is really on top of that. And the rider technology, when I talk about making sure that the bus time works and our information out there is correct, we just want to make sure those amenities are, are meeting what they, what they're meant to do. So, uh, continue coordination with partners. Uh, that's, you know, we need to get really integrated with our planning staffs and our localities on how transit is going to be integrated into our, into our, um, our jurisdictions. Um, you know, we don't continue, we don't, we're not, we don't pretend to replace the vehicle or anything. I know a lot of people say Europe has, has, you know, has figured it all out. But I lived in Europe a little bit. They have plenty of cars in Europe. They have great mass transit, too. But we want, but we want to be our critical part of the infrastructure of, you know, what, what's going on in the community, how, how we fit in, just like JCSA. People need, you know, water to do, uh, their development and water and sewer. We want to be that part of the infrastructure, too, of, of the mobility and, and, um, social and cultural and economic piece. So getting, getting more ingrained with our, our planning staffs and our, our, our other agencies and then nonprofits and chambers, you know, we need, we need to be building those networks, too, as, as, as an authority. Um, the capital projects and facilities, uh, we, um, we, we have a couple of facility projects that we've been working on for, for a, a pretty good length of time. One is a new administration maintenance facility. Bill and I kind of chucked on about it. It's, it can be tough to get these things through the, through the process, but we hope we're moving forward, um, now at a good rate. And so getting, but getting those together is good because that will, once again, improve our ability to plan and our driver, driver safety and inconvenience and, and actually are very, very needed. So another one, we used to use at Williamsburg Outlet Mall for a transfer center in the northern part. And that, as you all know, is long gone. So, um, we're looking at that northern area, too, of what we need to do for a more permanent, um, permanent place to, to transfer up in that area where it's always had a transfer area and so very, very highly-used ones. And when I say improve planning and have data and capital letters, that's exactly what I mean. We need to, we need to be gathering better data and more data and then using that data for our planning. So, um, we are looking, uh, in the near future. And of course, we work with JCC Purchasing very closely to, um, to implement an automated passenger counting system that'll really give us the data about who's getting off where, what stops are being used and what's, what's effective and efficient. So, um, that data's important. That data is very important to our planning and then what we do. So we need to start, um, gathering that. So our challenge is, uh, when I say staffing, that's exactly what I mean, uh, finding, finding the people that are qualified and, and, and have the right stuff, you might say. It's not for astronauts, bus drivers. As we say, we take it very seriously because we have, we have, uh, we're known for our fantastic customer service and that doesn't come easy. Um, our drivers are, are, are second to none and, um, we really appreciate that. But finding those with CDL licenses and, uh, you know, around the area is very challenging, every, every system dealing with it. But we think we have a work environment that'll really serve us well if we can reach out to people. It is a challenge. Um, nationwide trends, ridership across the nation is down. I mean, some of it's the cheap, uh, which, you know, gas has gone up 10%, but, um, it's still relatively down, I guess, where it was a couple of years ago. But there's this ad and, uh, we've heard, you know, uh, increasing car ownership as well. This just means fewer people are, are riding mass transit. But, um, we still, uh, you know, we were about, carrying about a little over a million passengers probably five years ago. We're still a little north of 900,000 trips. So, um, you know, we still are holding our own, but, uh, we certainly want to increase ridership. And those are the questions we need to be asking about, you know, are we going to places that people are, are, are still going to? Are we going to places we need to go? Are we going to those destinations? Um, or, you know, are we still going to places 30 years ago where the, where, where the destination, but maybe it's changed some. So we just need to start asking them. You know, we're going to begin asking those questions and seeing what those answers are and if we're on, if we're, um, on target. And, uh, funding streams may be pretty self-explanatory, too. The, the Senator was just here and certainly we deal with the political process and our funding. And, and, uh, Mr. McGlinnan, in his role on the, the TISDAK is, is also very familiar with that. And, um, you may have been hearing something called the fiscal cliff and, and that still has been staved off a little bit. Uh, that's about capital expenditures more than anything. Um, of course, you know, we're, we're in, we're in good shape at WADA. We've had, uh, staff over the years that have really, and a maintenance team that's really has, has, has replaced our buses on time and has maintained our bus as well. We've had them. And I think we'll be in very good shape, um, you know, for the next several years, seeing how this fiscal cliff plays out. And that doesn't, you know, it doesn't help on the, uh, maybe the capital facility side sometime. We certainly support all of our other, you know, agencies. A lot of it's been about the, the Washington Metro system. And so they, but there's been some, some movement this year. Uh, budget hasn't been passed yet, so nobody's got their chickens yet, huh? But there's been some movement on transportation especially, uh, which could benefit transit, you know, just that fungible part of money. So, um, you know, we hold out hope that the fiscal cliff will be averted, but we've, we've managed in our resources well at WADA over the years. And I think we're in good shape to, to weather what happens. But, um, that's a, that's really our quick introduction. I know I've moved fast, but wanted to just, just give you all an introduction to us and let you see us and maybe who's working for you. And, um, you have to answer any questions if you can. My mind tells where we are.
I got some. Um, I noticed with, um, and you touched on a little bit, the ridership's down. And it's a nationwide or you see it just as a community type? Are we in line with the nation or are we becoming a, a county that is able to afford, you know, another vehicle and people aren't riding the bus as much as they used to?
I think that's, that's correct. But at the same time, we are, we are not, I don't think we're seeing as much ridership decline as the rest of the country. We've actually held around. Part of that is our good partnership with, with Colony Williamsburg as well. You know, they've been saying just stay off ridership declines. You can have some of these other partnerships we've already had. Um, but, uh, no, I don't, we're, we're not as, we're not seeing as much decline as most parts of the nation. So I think we're a little better than, than most. Um, because we do have some dedicated riders and, uh, we do have, have good service and I think that helps. I mean, I think people will ride us because they enjoy it. They enjoy our service. They enjoy being with our drivers and stuff. Um, now, I will say that what's been out lately is they, they, the places that have seen increase in ridership have done what, what I was just kind of alluding to, is they looked at their system and said, okay, we need to look at this thing from a, uh, if we built a system today, what, what would it look like to get people to destinations they need or want to go to? And they've basically redesigned the whole thing. I don't know if that'll, I don't know if in our case that'll drastically change anything. It may not, but that's what the people that have seen ridership increases have done. They've looked at everything and said, okay, we need to make these changes to get people where they want to go today or need to go today. And so I think that that's what we're talking about. We need to start asking those questions.
Now, have you ever seen a, a transit authority take over, and this is probably a crazy question, but bear with me, take over a school bus facility operations?
I have not seen that. Uh, those are two pretty different animals.
Yeah, they are. But I was thinking of...
In the early days, school kids used to ride the city bus.
Yeah, they did. And, um, you know, as far as cost savings and that sort of thing and, and, um, it's something to put in back of your mind just as a thought.
Well, I think even some of the schools that aren't public here could profit from the, the public transit system.
Yeah. And you found out mistaken a lot of your part-time drivers are school bus drivers.
Yeah, don't take any more of ours.
I know. It's a, it's a, it's a cutthroat, man.
It is. It's tough.
It's extreme. We actually are, you know, we're going to meet with, uh, Tim over at the school and stuff, talk about how we can maybe just help each other as well and try to. The, the weather back in January kind of knocked us out. We're still recovering from that. But, you know, we need to be together on that and see if there's anything we can do as a, as a authority in the school system.
Yeah. Uh, back and just follow up on, on one of the things that, uh, Michael was talking about, the ridership, kind of surprised me to, to see that it's down, um, so much because, um, you know, maybe it's just the places that I happen to frequent and, and see the bus stops, uh, look like they've got more people, especially with the growing number of international students around town and international workers who have, are coming from places where they expect there to be public transportation, uh, in some form or another. But, uh, I guess that's not, uh, a system-wide phenomenon.
Yeah. Well, and that, you know, it may be that we're, ours, ours are holding up well with our public-private partnership, but it may be they're also seeing declines of weather over there. So I think, um, you know, seeing, seeing where those, those are, uh, with our Colony Williamsburg ridership as well as ours, but yeah, I think, um, and we've, we have changed some, you know, adjusted some stops and stuff. So you may be seeing more at some, but overall on that line. But, uh, yeah, I think, but we are holding up well, but we need to ask those questions about what we're doing. Yeah. But, uh, yeah, I think we're, we're still holding around with that, that number of trips a year.
In fact, if you'll give me just, just to add that, when you were asking about the nationwide trend, it looks like nationwide, probably over the last decade or so, that it's been a 10, 10% decrease nationwide. But for us, we've been under 5%. Um, our ridership tends to be pretty steady, constant. Um, we're talking about the workers, the service folks over here. We actually, Zach and I just came from our first meeting with the visa students. And we didn't, we weren't, we knew the program was here. We weren't aware that transportation is such an issue for them. So what we're trying to work out now is a partnership with them so that transportation is not their main concern because that's one of the biggest problems. Like 30% of the students said that transportation was a huge issue. And we're like, hello!
Yeah, it's a huge job, too.
You know, so it's a huge opportunity for us. So what we've been trying to do is kind of seize on those opportunities. Uh, we do have some routes that are very popular that have lots of ridership. And we have other ones that where the ridership has declined. But if you notice, we're still, you know, a couple, you know, 900,000 people arrive a year, uh, even with the decrease. So like I said, whereas nationwide, we've seen these large, you know, total large trends that come with the really taking ahead, we haven't. And I know that, that, you know, in the community, we're talking to people, the new route, Route 11 is very popular, um, where you may see only a few riders. We're hearing a lot of good feedback about people that are trying it every day. It's on that route specifically so people can get to Lackey Clinic.
That's it.
And that, I mean, I went to the clinic, you know, maybe a few weeks ago and people in the lobby were talking about it, you know, when they, they saw my water bag when I came in. And they're just like, I ride the bus and that kind of stuff. People are very happy just to get that route there. So there's all opportunities for us to grow. Um, there's not a route, you know, for HRT that goes down 17. And so we have different avenues and directions we can go in to increase our ridership and we're working on them. Um, like I said, these partnerships, working in the community and basically still beating the national trend, even though we're seeing a larger transit agencies over and over again. So I just wanted to, I didn't mean to interrupt Zach's presentation, but I wanted to make sure you understood how we continue to do well. And we see, you know, if you look at the numbers for this year, I mean, we're already over 500,000 riders, you know, and before July, we can easily get back to where we're seeing. There's been some fluctuation where we've gone up and down. So I think that, you know, with what we're doing, we've got lots of opportunities.
Well, I, I want to applaud your, um, uh, both willingness to rethink routes and to rethink where the community wants, uh, to have access through mass transit. Uh, I think that's, that's very smart because we've had a lot of hotels and motels that have closed down in different places and been, uh, replaced in some instances by others or new attractions, uh, old ways of doing business are gone. Uh, there are two, two, uh, dead horses that I keep beating. Some people around this table have heard me doing for a, for a long time. One of them is, um, uh, that some of our employers in the tourist industry in particular, um, restaurants, hotels, uh, and attractions, uh, have workforces that, uh, don't get off, uh, work until late at night. And so being able in, in various ways, and I appreciate the work that was already done to try to extend service into Grove, uh, to a later point in the evening. Um, but it's probably still not late enough. Um, and so, uh, maybe working more closely with some of those major employers about, uh, what would, um, attract a lot of their, uh, employees to take advantage of it, especially since, you know, in the alternative, some folks are riding bicycles on, on light streets late at night and it's just a recipe for disaster. Uh, and the, the other, um, dead horse, uh, is bidirectional.
Bidirectional service.
Thank you. It works.
I remember.
He watched the last meet.
So you've been, you've, uh, you're, you're putting skin in the game, though. You, you take part in, uh, transit system development. So, you know, we, and there may be opportunities there as, as the legislation and funding.
And certainly if there are things that, that you think that, uh, that, uh, Department of Regional Public Transit needs to take into account as we go, uh, forward with this, uh, Transit Service Delivery Advisory Committee work. We're, we're going to have several meetings over the next couple of months. Um, I'm more than happy to, to take that message.
Well, the reform I saw, they were talking about it kind of like minor system things. And as you say, maybe bidirectional services, something where within what we have, we just need to, if we can run more frequently, that may make it easier. I mean, there's certain places we're going to serve.
That's right.
We're a peninsula, for goodness sakes. You know, we don't, can't go so far out.
That's right. That's right. But, but it's, it's really more the question of people who, you know, are discouraged, are discouraged from getting on the bus because they got to go the whole route.
Yes.
When they want to just go a third of the way back.
Absolutely. That's, that's really our dichotomy.
Yeah, yeah.
Length versus, you know, frequency and geographic coverage. And so we're kind of talking about that as well.
It's like his little life in that dead horse yet.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
I'd like to bring up one thing that, uh, believe it or not, I'm sitting there, my wife is reading the newspaper. She says, you know, there's this transit system somewhere out in Kansas that has basically shut down. And they have gone from structured routes to a sort of a, an on-demand type system.
Right.
Which I thought was rather fascinating. Uh, not that it would be, um, you know, something that would necessarily be helpful for our whole system, but are there places where something like that, an, an on-demand type, uh, um, system, you know, where people are calling up, uh, and there's, for example, uh, the restaurant, work on late at night. You know, maybe you have a, a certain area where you run one run just on demand for something like that, where people call in or, or sign up for it on, on, online or something. Is that something you could look at or?
I think probably with technology, something like that is probably more possible than ever.
Okay.
We, we could, since you can really get notified like that. I mean, so, and certainly one of our neighbors, you know, Bay Transit, who runs Charlotte City and New Kent, they're, they're kind of an on-demand thing.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's, I think there's certainly, you know, we could try to, uh, not be a one-dimensional whatsoever. Yeah. So I think there's certainly the technology, that, that possibility is there.
Do you think the ride-sharing phenomenon has cut into you?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Sorry. That's been, that's been a dead horse. It's going to be so much, I forgot to even mention it. Yeah, absolutely. But I don't know if it's as big as, I, I think all the, the industry experts say it's, you can't attribute all of it to, which I think some people had, you know, tried to, but certainly it's sort of a cut-in. So, but I think it's a question of whether people that use that would really use public transit anyway. I think it certainly has had some impact.
I had a couple of questions. Um, one, so one thing that you brought up was technology. And so it looks like you have to go on the internet. So it's not really a mobile app?
That is, when we talk about our next thing, then app is something we, we want to develop in the near future. Yeah. The, the ABL we work with didn't really have an app themselves, our company. So we've been working with them to figure out what would be very user-friendly.
Okay. But that, that's still...
Near future, hopefully.
And then, um, shelters. So I remember when I first came on this board, there was a lot of talk about shelters were tough because you move stops based on rideability, if, if they're a popular stop or not. But, I mean, I see so many people like out in front of the, the Farm Fresh, standing out there in the rain. Um, is there any, you know, are there some spots where there could be shelters that you, that you know there's a 90% chance you're going to stay at that stop or?
Uh, yeah, I think, well, um, we've, we've developed a system where we're trying to, uh, where we're classifying stops and, and, and saying, okay, this would be a good use of a shelter here. It has enough ridership and, and stuff like that instead of just, you know, that it would be an effective place for it. So we are engaging in that type of thinking where we're classifying stops to see. So if there's enough ridership at Farm Fresh, uh, and just for example, yeah, then, then we would, we would put some. And we also, and it's not just shelters, but, you know, maybe put some kind of seat or bench, something a little less than a shelter or something for comfort versus, uh, maybe staying out of the elements. So, um,
Yeah.
You know, it's just whether there's enough ridership there. So we're, we're starting to classify stops according to that.
Right. Because I wondered about even a semi-permanent, but I, I, I don't know if that's done in, in the transient business. And I guess you would have to be careful about safety because you would really want something that was, you knew was, yeah, it's going to stay down.
That would get you.
But, um, and so could you, um, could you stay, talk a little bit about the, um, the ADA? Like, how does someone come about knowing about that service, about if you're within a certain, um...
That's pretty cool, tomorrow.
Yes. So, and what that is?
Yeah. I would first recommend just giving us a call, um, or, uh, at WADA, our number 757-220-5493. Um, gowada.org. Uh, yeah, really, we have our, our ADA coordinator, she's at a conference right now for some ADA stuff. But, um, yeah, really, give us a call or send us an email there because it is, I mean, certainly that, yeah, we'll, we'll provide them information because it can get kind of convoluted applying. There's some, I guess, to put it simply, there is an application you make. You do have to meet certain eligibility requirements.
Okay.
And so the first thing would be, yeah, just to get in touch with us. And, um, certainly there'll be plenty of information out there in general on the, on the web. But, um,
Okay.
Getting, getting in touch with us to, to ask about the eligibility requirements.
Okay. But you, but to start with, you have to live within a certain radius of a stop or route?
You, you have to be within, so you don't have to live. You have to be at a, you can be at a place.
I got you.
Yeah, like three-quarters of a route, if, if that's the way it has to go. But yes, you have to be within.
All right. So the best thing to do is to call 757-220-5493.
Yeah, that's our number. Yeah, I'm on email a lot, but I'll make sure that's on the bottom of the screen.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. And then we, we have, we have experts on that in our office and, um, you know, just give you a little mini varsity about it. But, I mean, it sits, but like anything, it can get very complicated. So turn eligibility is the first step and make an application.
Okay. Um, the, the reason that I brought that up is because I saw someone recently who said that they were told that somebody would come pick them up if they, and, and so I, I wanted to, to find out a little bit more about it. I knew nothing about it. So, um, it's good to know that you have people there that can
They do come pick you up.
Answer that. But I mean, it was, it was, I, I, like from your front door, et cetera. And I wasn't sure how, you know, but I think the best thing to do is suggest people call you. Um, and then you talked a little bit about driving, uh, your drivers and sometimes facing a shortage on that. And how would you say that your pay, because you do pay a little better than the school system, I think, which is why, well, I think we already know that because the drivers are leaving to go to WADA. So, but how, what do you hear from your drivers? Are they, I mean, everybody would always like more pay.
Sure, right, exactly.
But is it a comparable wage?
I, I think, I think it's a combination of we, we, we pay fairly, uh, you know, once again, everybody and we, we would love to be able to pay. We, I think we appreciate our people so much. We'd love to be able to pay them. But I hope we, we pay equitably. But I think we also just offer a good working environment. Um, I think, and that's not my bias. I think it's just a fact. And, um, you hear that. And so, um, but I think, and then there was a heavy lift done by the WADA board, uh, a couple of years ago to increase that pay. So it's, it's, it's not something that by accident. It was a very intentional move before I was even, you know, involved with WADA to, to make that move to pay equitably. And so it's paid off. And us, we have a shortage, but I, once again, I don't think it's, I think we're also better than the industry when it comes to that shortage and, and the quality of our drivers as well. So I don't mean to disparage any other system. I just think we, we, we have a great, great set of drivers.
Yeah. I think one of the other things is it's a year-round job, whereas school board during the summer, and a lot of the, a lot of the drivers come part-time during the summer so folks can take a vacation and it's...
Yeah, I got you. All right. Any other?
No, thank you.
All right.
I just want to say one thing.
Sure.
People, you know, bus riders are just like everybody else in their commuting. If you really want to see something, go down to the transportation center between about 6:30 and 8:30 and see all the shuffling as people go and go to work. Use it in fun.
All right. Thank y'all very much. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
So we'll have a presentation of the online expenditure register. Mr. Porter, is that what we're?
Ms. Mellon and Ms. Tate and Ms. Day.
Good afternoon.
So we'll have a presentation of the online expenditure register. Mr. Porter?
Ms. Mellon and Ms. Page.
Okay.
And Ms. Day.
What I'll do is just do a brief introduction. Mr. Porter had asked us to get together and try to make the online expenditure register happen by the beginning of April. And so Sharon Day, the Assistant Manager, has taken her lead in working with the Information Resources Department, so she'll give a brief overview of what they've been doing, and then Patrick Page will give you a demonstration.
Thank you.
Well, first, thank you very much for having us here. We're excited to be here and have the opportunity to show you what we've been working on behind the scenes for this transparency initiative. First, as you know, the accounting software that we currently use is very old. It's been in place for about 20 years. So the vision for something like this, of course, didn't exist then, and we knew that that really wouldn't be the solution for getting something like this on the website. But however, at the board's direction, we started looking at other avenues. We did know about some other software that the county had recently invested in that was being used for business intelligence, some data analytics software. And so we started looking at that technology in conjunction and collaboration with IT. I did want to say that although the concept of an online checkbook sounds very simple, there is quite a bit of due diligence that we have to do, just to make sure that we follow the laws. There is certain information that is protected, of course, under Code of Virginia, under FOIA exempt information, and then also federal regulations, for example, HIPAA, Protected Information for Health information. And then also, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we looked at other websites, that we didn't just reinvent the wheel. We looked to see what else was out there, other localities in the state of Virginia, and also outside of the state of Virginia. We looked at some large localities, such as Chesterfield and Hanover and Henrico, and then some smaller localities. For example, Goochland County was one of the ones that we looked at. We did find quite a variation in what was out there. We noticed that some folks had a spreadsheet with the information provided, others had more of a search engine. So if you knew what you were looking for, you could put in a specific vendor, for example, and it would pull up all the transactions to that vendor. We wanted to put as much information out there as we could, and we also wanted to make it easy for people. So that was the approach that we took. Ultimately, we pulled together the list of exclusions from federal and state regulations and pulled that together for the IT department. And then from there, IT was able to go into our accounting software and pull out the information from our accounts payable system and apply those filters. And those filters were to exclude the information that is protected. Just to give you an idea in volume, we cut over 2,000 checks a month. And that's just checks. We also have other payments that are made. For example, we have wire transactions, we pay by credit cards, quite a bit of our vendors are paid by credit card these days. And we also have ECH payments. And so all that data needs to be looked at to make sure that, again, we are protecting the information that needs to be protected. So from there, I wanted to turn it over to Patrick Page for an actual demonstration of what we have. I did want to mention, because some people have heard about legislation that was out there, that was introduced this year. There was a bill, it was actually introduced last year, and then another bill came through this year. It was Senate Bill 751. My understanding is that that legislation did not get out of the House Committee. However, we are continuing with our initiative because we believe it is important to have this information out there. So with that...
Thank you. Really, what I want to point out, this is probably the first use of our business intelligence tools in an outward use. We've been using these tools probably for about the past nine months internally for analytical use, for departments like F and S, and for real estate assessments, Commissioner of Revenue, and now Police. And it's become a really good business analytical tool, which you're going to see more in the future as we go into other systems and bring more data forward. So with this, the website is really based in three areas. This top area here, again, is our disclosure on what we can provide and what is restricted. There is a link here for help with all the filters that are used with the system, which I'm going to demonstrate in a minute, but you can see it's a full context help that's available to users when they're using the The next section really shows a graph of our total general fund expenditures for the current fiscal year. This will vary a little bit throughout the year as expenditures are dealt with, but this generally goes across the board for all of our counties. The next section narrows down our outside agencies and our vendors. And with this, it'll vary depending on the monthly loads, which we're going to update data once a month at the beginning of month for the system.
If you wouldn't mind going up just real quickly. The reason why we wanted to show this is so that citizens knew that really if our online expenditure register, what they will be seeing is just those outside agencies and vendor payments.
Not personnel.
Personnel, not personnel. And that, generally 50% of that overall budget goes to the school system, and we don't have that detail. So it's not something that we can show on the online register. And then transfers to other funds are just pretty much journal entries that are going someplace else. So, thank you.
We continue down again. We'll use this chart, and it'll reflect on a monthly basis our transactions. The bottom section here really gets down into the details of the information. And I'll be able to go through and show you how to use the filters real quickly, how to filter down two systems. To do that, we really need to look at the tools that we have. And before we go too far, there's a couple of symbols and tools I just go over real quick. Symbol right here, we started seeing recently with browsers, is a refresh symbol. If you hit this symbol in the system right now, it'll refresh to our normal startup state, which will be the last month's information, all departments, all accounts. If you hover over this, you're going to see a symbol called pencil, which is going to bring up lists for filtering down information. And then the slider button will turn off that particular filter, and there's one for each filter. If you don't wish to use the filter, right now, we're going to leave them all on and start from our basic setup. So to demonstrate, I open up the filter for the date. We have three choices. We can go from a list we've established, which are the months. And we have data in the system right now for the current fiscal year. If you want to deal with it from a calendar standpoint, you can go to date-to-date, getting date, ending date, and get all the transactions in between that timeframe. Or if you want to deal with an established timeframe of last month, last two months, three months ago, you can use this list. All of them are available for the date function. So for demonstration purposes, I'm going to clear all the checkboxes in each one of the dates, but I'll go back and put in for the first six months of our fiscal year. And with that, we show those dates, and say, okay, you'll see a list of all the months available during this time period. Now, this is, again, is all the data across the county right now for those months, all the different departments. And if you go down to the bottom, you're going to see a familiar checklist that right now will carry across to about a lot of information. So with that, we can narrow this down a bit. If I go up here to the departments, and I won't say, I'm going to let all the departments go out of there, but I'm going to go down and select our friends at facilities names. Say okay to that. Now we have narrowed this information down to facilities maintenance during this time period, but all of the transactions for facilities maintenance during this time period. And you narrowed it down a bit. It is all available there at that time. Now, if we want to go a little bit further with this, with our accounts, I go over and select the accounts. And for this one, I'm going to narrow scope a little bit and say, let's go for equipment maintenance, which is quite obvious in facilities maintenance. So with that, I'll say okay to it. And now we're down to basically one page, but this is all of the equipment maintenance for the past six months in the system, the dollar figures, the vendors, or which they were doing the transactions with. Now, a lot of times, we want to add other accounts into it that are associated with it. So for this demonstration, I'll go ahead and add in what we call furniture equipment replacement and furniture and equipment purchase, which are closely associated with maintenance. I'll add that in there, and we'll now see some of the transactions where we have furniture and equipment that's been purchased, or some replacement. Again, the filters build everything. And we go up through all the departments, timeframe, and accounts.
Okay.
So it's all flexible. This will be online as of April 2nd, next Monday, available to the public.
And it will be updated monthly?
It will be updated monthly at the first of the month to reflect the previous month's transactions.
First business day of the month, is it?
Yes, yes.
Let me ask a question on this, to make sure. If, for example, Parks and Rec has culinary programs, like cake decorating, and it's paid for by fees, if it don't get enough people, then it doesn't make, and they have somebody, and they buy, what is it, sprinkles for the cake, that, will that show up here?
If there was a transaction associated with it, either being a purchase order or a credit card transaction.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that's, that's how far it can go. But you have to be careful, because like, somebody say, oh, what is the county doing buying sprinkles? Well, because it's Parks and Rec, a program that we're doing that's fee-paid, it's not taxpayers' dollars about sprinkles, it's people that are participating in the class.
I understand.
Tell them it's for the board.
Yeah. We need all the sprinkles we can get around.
We've got lollipops for the board.
Now, as we're tracking all this, is there a way to track the amount of time in the financial equivalency in a year of what this costs us to do?
The system here?
Mm-hmm.
We could, but I want to tell you, it's a system that we bought into to use for many, many other purposes than this. We happened, with the request that came to us, it was an opportunity for us to put this out to the public early.
Right. I'm just wondering, not necessarily the program, but the labor that it takes to feed the program.
I think the labor was on the front end.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And we do have financial software replacement in the pipeline, in the CIP. And just from the demonstrations we've seen, the newer software there is much more friendly. So you can capture the information as you're entering the information, as they're paying a bill. They can capture it then, as opposed to us having to do this on the backend.
And I remember we talked about buying this several years ago, and trying to roll it out at the same time.
Yeah.
And this was part of what it could do, but the citizens didn't understand at that time that our old data was so old that we had to get back up to where now you can use the equipment and do more things. And that's where we were trying to get. And we had a few members that were, not board members, but a few citizens that wanted us to get there a little earlier. But this was in the process, and this was a point that we were trying to get to. But, you know, just wanted to let them know, you know, that this is not something that we just came up with yesterday. This is something we planned for, put in place, and we're looking to do in April, opening of it anyhow. So...
And I think a couple of other caveats. I mean, if you notice up there, there's, you know, it has the vendor name and the type of transaction, but if you notice, second line, it says purchase card. Okay? And that's because we pay, like, when you pay your credit card bill, you're paying to Chase or whoever. You're not paying to the vendor. So that is one of the limitations that we have right now in our current system, is that. So, you know, if somebody was interested in that detail, that it would have to be a phone call to staff to be able to look into what that transaction actually was.
Right.
And that's statewide. That is one of the things we found through our research. And several localities actually don't post P-card transactions at all. We did have the capability, we're with JP Morgan, and we do have the capability to upload that information in our accounting software. And because we could do that, we could at least have that included. So they can see the dollar amount, the department, and also the type of expense.
And then they could call and...
Yes.
And say, hey, this purchase or this pay card would be, you know, can you explain that?
Would it, would it make sense to have an email link, rather than have people call?
Yes, we do have.
So do you have an indication of, you know, timeframe in which people can expect a response?
It would depend on the nature of the request, but something, something like that, if it was a P-card transaction, be fairly quickly to answer. We do monitor the email daily, and so I would expect a turnaround very quickly, something like that.
Good.
And the other thing that I wanted to point out is that, this is just the general fund of James City County. And again, trying to limit the staff, because it's a lot of upfront staff work. You know, in a new system, you can set it up to identify, you know, maybe with a checkbox, that this is excludable type information, whereas we had to go through the extra steps of identifying it, sending it to IT, them going through, setting up filters, saying, okay, here are the rules, you know, doing some programming to say exclude that. So we haven't extended it to some of the other funds yet, because it would require a lot more. Like, your social services fund is a lot, there's a lot more information that is excludable. And so we've, our thought was, we would set out the general fund first and see if this takes care of, you know, what people would like to see, and then hopefully that those other ones can roll forward with, with a new system.
And the loaded question of the day. How do you, can you track what the traffic is on this? In other words, how many people are using it, how many transactions?
Yeah. We can do that from our website statistics.
All right.
And we'll start tracking this in order to report the news.
Good. Thank you.
And it'll also say where the people are located.
Oh, yes.
See how many in my district, right?
Well, no, I think it's, I think it's based on country.
It's based on country.
Country, state, state, yeah.
Russia wants to know how many checks.
Right.
Where vendors are. Yeah, they might want to know where vendors are.
And I guess I would like to ask you, is this what you're looking for? Have we kind of met your expectations until we get the new stuff in and can do, you bet, I mean, just do what you want?
Thank you very much.
And I know that this information is downloadable as well. Don't know that we mentioned that, but you can export the data in Excel, CSV files, PDF, if anyone wanted to download it, play with the data, or sort it to their liking. It does have that capability as well.
Um, oh, shoot.
There it went.
Yep.
Having them all.
Welcome to the club.
Oh, I know what I was going to, it came back. So how much are you trusting the filter? Are we checking it before it goes up, or are we checking it after it goes up to see if anything slipped through, or?
We're doing our best diligence, is what I can tell you today. Filters are not perfect in this, and we can't program for every situation. So what we've also asked are the departments that feed information and transactions into it to look at on a regular basis. And if something comes out that is needing to be removed, they can inform us, and we'll go through that.
Okay.
And I can't sit here and tell you that it's a perfect system.
Okay.
Because our data is not pristine, to be quite honest.
And I want to make sure you understand, it's not that there's a department head, I don't want this out there. There's got to be a reason for it to be taken out.
Oh, I understand. Yeah.
Do you have an idea about how many checks are written monthly from the general fund?
About 2,000.
Okay.
I will say, we were able, excuse me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We were able to use our chart of accounts to do some of that work for us. When it came to the exclusions, for example, on the juror payments, that information is FOIA exempt. And so we have a specific account code that all juror payments go to. So that was one of the filters that was fairly easy. You know, we said we have to exclude this account code. So that did help with some of the legwork. It's really when you get into vendor-specific payments, and some of that, the nature of that information, and really, the department heads would have to guide that process to let us know if there's a vendor that they use for a certain purpose that may be excludable.
Thank you.
If we're finished with that, can I ask Patrick one other question?
Sure.
That's not directly related to this, and that is, I just heard on the radio on the way over about Atlanta, where the hackers have taken a bunch of the city's data hostage.
A little ransom.
Right, right. For a $51,000 ransom, which is a weird number.
Fifty-one?
How well protected are we against that possibility?
We work diligently every day to keep us as protected as possible. And in fact, my supervisor with network security just came back from the... And in fact, my supervisor with network security just came back from a conference on cybersecurity. We send him about every year to it so we can keep up. We have added tools over the past couple of years to help keep us protected. I can't sit here and say that, you know, it's not going to happen. In our industry, it's, when will it happen? And do our best to put that off, but will it happen sometime? But we do our best to do it so far we've been successful. We're not a big target per se in the industry, but you never know who they're going for. And Atlanta is not the only one, because I've also been keeping tabs on Davidson County, North Carolina, and Mecklenburg, Charlotte, North Carolina, both got hit in December and in February. So this is continuing.
And they were talking about backup, and so I'm assuming our systems are backed up and segregated from?
Yes, our systems are backed up from multiple layers. Some people may think I'm a little impassioned with it.
We like that.
We do a layer that also goes to tape, and our tapes go off-site to a locked vault area. So that we could, we're also putting in systems that can be restored quicker with newer technology. And we're looking to see if it's some newer technology in some of the purchases we're doing now. We try to stay ahead, we're not going to be on that edge that is what they call the bleeding edge. But we are going to take the technology that is sound, put it into place as best we can for the best cause, and keep us running.
And then you give Bill a thumb drive to it every night.
Every night.
We're doing the best that we can.
Which means he doesn't trust you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no close session out, and if there's any further discussion that any board members want to have this evening?
I suppose we should return to the question about Senator 942, if there's anything the board wants to do. We did indicate in our communication to the governor that we would be having this session, we would communicate with them afterwards.
We did.
Yes.
We did. I, and I did bring up at that meeting, the one concern that I did have about writing that letter and saying that was that, you know, this was not something that we initiated. This was done on the state level, so I, you know, you understand my, like, how much ownership do we want to take on something that we did not initiate?
But ownership and objection are two different things. So, you know, I think it's pretty clear, I think that this is a state-level issue that's, to a certain degree, been foisted down on us. You know, whether we want to as a board to take a position on it, or whether we don't want to, that's fine. You know, we just, I think we just need to discuss that, discuss what we want to do.
Sure.
And see where we want to go from there. But to be quite honest with you, I do not see taking a position on asking the governor to either do or not do something would necessarily convey any ownership of the program. Quite the contrary, I would insist that it did not. I know you said forced down on us. I kind of understand what you're saying, but, you know, I know that our past county administrators sent out several emails on this item, and what was going on. And also sent some out as far as if you want to give some money back to the citizens. There was suggestion about that as well in an email I remember reading, I don't have it with me, but I'm sure it's archived in our system. You know, there was some board members that talked about how it would be spent, or if we, do we spend it, do we not? There was also, you know, conversations with the past chairman, not as many as I think we would have liked to have had. But I know that he representing the board and discussing that, and then that going out in Brian's regular emails, and that was before you got on the board, of course. And that going out in his regular emails that, hey, I met with Tommy, and this was discussed, I met with, you know, and even got in far as if y'all have the ability on your side, if this goes through, to give funds back to the citizens, or use the funds in different ways. And that's why, so I think, you know, we were informed, but not as much as we'd like to have been informed. You know, so I think there was a communication breakdown.
And I think communication may have been uneven, because I don't think there was, I did not have any conversation with the chair despite my request for an opportunity to discuss it.
Okay.
And so I just want to make that clear, that not everyone may have had the same level of discussion. I certainly talked with the county administrator about it.
That's who I talked about.
Expressed concerns about it, and reservations at that time. But, so, you know, again, I said that that's probably internal stuff that the governor doesn't particularly need.
But I mean, you know, we knew this. We didn't maybe known as in-depth as we know today about it. So, but, you know, we have accountability in this situation as a board.
Well, there's one thing about discussing ideas, which, I mean, we all do every single day. And there's, you know, you can't put every single idea in the world out there. I mean, my God, that's all we would do. But for, to go from an idea to, like, all of a sudden, it's on the House floor, you know, that was, that's a little bit, that's where I think some of the disconnect was, because I know it was discussed, you know, last fall, but that was pretty much, I think, all a lot of us heard until all of a sudden it was happening.
Isn't that the way most of it happens, though? I mean, most of the stuff up there, in that layer, you know, there's something that's discussed, and then it's moved through the Senate and the House, or it's not moved through the Senate and the House. And we don't have a, you know, since we're not up there in the Senate, we don't have that.
Well, it's different, I think, when you have something that encompasses the entire state, when you have something that's localized just to us. I think that's where there's a little bit of a difference in that concept, in the way things work.
Well, the transportation tax, that's limited to 23. That didn't go through a long process of, you know, and we've also got the, you know, all the stuff that comes down to is that we pay for as a board, for the schools. I mean, I'm more concerned about what they send down to me that you're going to pay for, and I've got to look back to my citizens and go, now I got to figure out how to pay for this. I'm more concerned about those items.
Well, it's still going to be on their backs, because now they're being taxed for it again, so.
I think the problem that I had coming into this new one, this is where I had sort of the same reaction, I think, a lot of the citizens had, was that there may have been some discussions, obviously, in other jurisdictions, there were some detailed discussions. In our jurisdiction, there were not necessarily that level of detailed discussions. But what we never had in this process was that although there was some information there for us, we never had the opportunity to discuss that in a public venue. We never had, like we are right now on television, where people could sit and listen to us converse back and forth about the pros and cons, or the merits, or the drawbacks of what this particular legislation was doing. And then what was frustrating for me was, okay, it showed up on the Senate floor, but as it went through the process from one house to the other, significant changes were made. Significant changes. And, you know, we were all sitting here thinking, okay, food is exempt until right at the last, and we find out why. And I, you know, I'm sorry, I guess what we were being told is that if we want to keep something like that from happening, we have to have a physical presence in committee up there all the time, because things are going to happen. And if we're not there to say we object, that's taken as concurrence. And I really don't, I really don't agree with that. And I think that's what has bothered our citizens to a certain degree. Now, when I came on here, you know, when we started this discussion a couple of weeks ago, when we asked, there was a request for a letter. I was not comfortable sending a letter from the board. And we had that discussion internally, one-on-one, around. Again, we didn't have the opportunity to have a public discussion with all five of us. But there just didn't seem to be consensus on the board that we all said, yes, send the letter in the name of the board, or no, don't send the letter at all. There was varying opinion. And the solution was that we didn't send a letter from the board, we had the county administrator send a letter from the county administrator. So it didn't represent my, you know, my position on it. Because if it had been just me, as you saw what I did, I put my position out there. Now, the question is, I think for us, is do we or do we not, as a board, want to put a board position out there? If we don't, that's fine. Then we should all be free to put our own individual positions out there as to what we think ought to or ought not to be done with this. Quite honestly, I think it's sort of, at this point, a moot point. I think we're going to be forced to deal with it. And one of the difficulties I have with it is that the argument that you can give, give some of it back, there is no way you can give this money back to the same people you took it from. You can come close, but you cannot give it back to the same people you took it from. And so we are being saddled with the responsibility of trying to return something that the state has taken, if we so decide to return it, but we don't have the method to do it properly. And that I find offensive. So, you know, those are my frustrations, and, you know, I don't think we need to waste a whole lot of time here, because it's, I really don't think we have a consensus on the board of what we ought to do one way or the other. But I think we ought to have that discussion and see if we are anywhere close.
Are we at a point where we could talk about what, if the governor were to sign this, and we have all this extra revenue come in, are we able to keep that? I would like to see that revenue kept separate, and then we can discuss what we're going to, this was all, this is unexpected revenue. And, you know, we had our regular budget that we've counted on with everything that's included. And now you have this extra lump that I think is kind of, I think it's something that we, to me personally, we need to sit down, not plug it into the budget, because once it's plugged in, it's like impossible to unplug it. But to take that, and I don't know what the process is, because I don't think we've experienced anything like this before, but take that, if he signs it, and figure out what we're going to do with it.
How are you handling it? Because there were a few questions that were.
It's in the budget, but it will be able to be set out. We can tell you exactly where we, where I recommend that that money go.
Okay.
So it can be, it's there, but it's separated out. It'll give you the amount of money that minus it.
And we will know by April 18th, which is the veto session, right? Because the governor's supposed to take action by the 9th.
Yes.
Right? And if for any reason he vetoed it, for instance, there would be a vote on the motion at that point. We would know whether or not it was in there, so by middle of April, we'll know. So here, I would like to make a suggestion, because I don't think that there's a real consensus on what to do about it. And because two of our members have already taken formal positions as individual board members on this matter, I would suggest that we do owe the governor a report. And that the report can simply be that we met with Senator Norman, we had a discussion about legislation, following issues were raised, and then just sort of leave it a factual report of what our board meeting was about. And then individual board members who want to take whatever action can do that. I will tell you that, from my perspective, I will write to the governor, and I'll encourage him to veto the bill. But I'll also recommend that if he doesn't do that, that he amend the bill by striking out the grocery tax and perhaps replacing it with a retention of the $2 room tax.
And he's able to do that?
He would be able to propose that amendment to the General Assembly, whether or not they would accept it.
Take it, is another matter.
Right, right.
Okay.
And I don't know whether the governor would, you know, would be inclined to do an amendment or not anyway. But that would just be my personal position on it.
So what would be your reasoning for adding the $2 room tax?
Because you're, by reducing the revenue that would be available there, you would make up that revenue with the retention of the room tax, or at least a portion of it. And you're putting the burden back on to the place where I think it most properly resides. So, I mean, it just seems to me, that's a fair, from my perspective, it's a fair way to treat the citizens at large, because this is a big portion of everybody's annual expenditures.
And, you know, this way, I like what John says, because this way, Michael, if you like this, but you think there ought to be some changes, then you don't have to recommend to the governor that he veto it. But you could recommend to the governor, if you thought fit, that he amended. And that way, each individual can take a position, and he can see where we all are on the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm just frustrated for myself how it's all gone down. And because it looks like we're not connected.
The biggest concern to me, Michael, is simply the fact that we would be the only jurisdictions in the state which ask our general population to support tourism funding. Every other one uses room taxes, admission taxes, other forms of taxation that are directly tied to tourism to support that marketing effort. Even places that Senator Norman pointed to, like Virginia Beach or Richmond, their budgets are drawn from the room taxes that they have at higher rates than we're allowed to do, or by imposition of admissions taxes, which we're not allowed to do at all, but City Williamsburg did. And, you know, it's just a matter of where the appropriate place to put that burden. And then the concern for me is that it then sort of takes a portion of our flexibility to think about whether we need to ask citizens to support additional revenue for other needs and priorities that we might have that would serve the broader community. And not just an important, but a single industry. So that's just my, so I guess my perspective is that we can do a report back to the governor and then take individual actions, and I've just told you what mine would be.
Right. And I do think that, you know, I've been getting the emails as well, and I think the grocery has thrown people off, for sure. And the process now, I did hear somebody could have said stop. I think it would have been very difficult for one person to say stop. I don't know that we would have necessarily gotten anywhere.
It's hard for a board to say stop unless we've had a public discussion.
Yes, and so I think, you know, the process could have been, and I understand what you're saying about public meetings. But when you're talking about an additional sales tax, and I tried to do some, because as you all know, I travel a lot for sports tourism, and I pay a lot in taxes. There are some places I go where I pay $30 more nights. Now, I shop in those places, and I eat in those places. But they're definitely getting more money from me at a hotel than, you know, I'm paying the same as if somebody lives there and what I'm eating in their restaurants. So, and, I mean, I go out of state where there's a lot higher taxes than you have here in Virginia, too, as well, than we have. What am I saying? I've moved from Virginia all of a sudden. So, you know, I think there could have been a better way for, even though it was, it might have been good for there to be a town hall, and so for more people to get buy-in to it and in the discussion, so. But we can definitely report back to the governor, and then we'll leave it to everybody to do what they feel is best. And then, we haven't heard that it's been signed in the last two and a half hours.
He had signed it before, but if he doesn't sign it, the law becomes law.
But we got a letter saying.
Say he wouldn't do anything.
Correct, that's right, you're correct, yes.
But I mean, the interesting thing is, if he doesn't sign it, it becomes law.
Oh.
It's not like a package veto.
Okay, I need one of those, like, remember when I was little, I'm just a bill, I need one of those. Yeah, we need one of those for the Commonwealth.
So if he doesn't sign it, and it becomes law, is it veto-able?
It becomes law.
He's the veto-able person.
He vetoes it before.
Right, but, well.
So in vetoing it, he would actually say?
If he doesn't veto or he doesn't sign, it becomes law.
It is what it is.
He can send it back.
He can send it back in amendment.
There you go. Maybe that's what I was trying to get at.
And if the amendment is accepted, then, you know, we go back to the procedure. And if it is defeated, then it becomes law without a signature.
Yeah, and then I do look, when we start this budget process, you know, well, I guess we'll see where we are, but we'll have to have a robust discussion, robust discussion at that time.
If it's all right, do the report. I will email it to you all to, you know, say, yeah, and make changes where you see fit.
Well, does anyone happen to have, and maybe the general public would like to know, the best way to contact the governor?
By email, probably. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Governor dot Virginia dot gov. Governor dot Virginia spelled out, dot gov. And it'll give you his phone, his phone number, and it'll also give you a link for communication for email.
I was trying to see if there was an email address in here.
There's a thing you can send, but it's not, it's hard to back.
Really? Not as easy as ours, huh?
Yeah, there's an actual form on the website.
There's a form.
That Supervisor Eisenhower just, and you got to prove that you're not a robot.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and they'll send that through. So, yeah, so we highly suggest that people contact the governor's office if they have an opinion. All right. With that, is there any further business? There's somebody.
We're dinging.
No, we said the governor.
The governor.
So we do not need a closed session or?
No. So we're going to adjourn our meeting until 5:00 PM on April 10th, 2018, for our regular meeting. Oh, roll call? Sorry.
So moved.
Thank you.
So we got a motion?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
I apologize.
Everybody.
Thank you.